What's going to be going on?
Okay.
Call the meeting of the city council for Monday evening, March 25th, 2019, to order. Please stand as we salute our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, councilors.
Good evening, Mr. President.
And good evening, guests. Believe it or not, we're back home. So, it's a great, uh, it's a great evening here for all of us as city councilors and for all of those that are here this evening, because we have some business to, to tend to. So, please excuse the fact we were away for a while, um, but it is, uh, it's been taken care of, and that was the, uh, oh, God bless, uh, we all cried like that one time, I hope. Um, and, and we were away because our elevator was down. But just before we do begin, I just want to just quickly, just quickly, just quickly give a great big thank you to those that were involved in, in tending to all the businesses that have been tended to the last several weeks, several months, I should say. Uh, the elevator, which came under our building superintendent and his staff, uh, Jim Casiri is here this evening, and, uh, I, I think he's done outstanding job. Yay! Him and his staff and his assistant April, and of course, our maintenance department, Brian Madder, and others that work under him, all did a great, great job in these last few weeks, putting everything back into place. And as, as you can see coming into the hall tonight, the, uh, the place is all sort of like dolled up for us, so that was very good to see. I do also want to take time to thank, uh, the mayor, Mayor Carpenter, and he worked as well with I and the city clerk and with the BCA, Mark Lindy and his staff, to make sure that we'd have new cameras, new microphones. Uh, we've got a couple of other new TVs that have been in place. Um, it, it's something that we've been waiting for, and I think, I believe, we're finally back on TV this evening, and the reception's gonna be much clearer and, and much brighter, and I, I hope I look as good as I always did before, but I don't know, but whatever, uh, at least the people at home are gonna appreciate the fact that, that it's, it's, it's a different view, so we, uh, we definitely want to thank them as, as, as well. So, you know, with that all being said, um, again, it's great to, it's great to be here and, uh, and welcome again to all of you. So, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you want to take the first item?
We have the acceptance of the minutes of the March 11th, 2019, city council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Mr. President.
I have a late councilor.
I want to make, uh, two motions, a motion to accept a late file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept a late file, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to, uh...
Counselor?
Nobody's opposed on that. I, I'd also like to make a, a, a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and act on it tonight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we suspend the rules and act on them, uh, this evening. And, uh, Robin, I believe you have the, uh, the list there for the, um, the other screen.
Mr. President, I'd also like to make a motion to take it collectively.
Second.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to take collectively, all in favor of that?
Okay.
Opposed? Taken collectively. All set, Robin?
Yep. The appointment of Michael Gomes as a special police officer of the city of Brockton for a one-year term ending January 2020. An appointment of Jonathan Drain as a special police officer of the city of Brockton for a one-year term ending January 2020.
That's the late file.
Appointment of Adilson Andre as a special police officer of the city of Brockton for a one-year term ending January 2020. Appointment of Darnell Campbell as a special police officer of the city of Brockton for a one-year term ending January 2020. Appointment of Alicia Fernandez as a special police officer of the city of Brockton for a one-year term ending January 2020.
And now, the appointment will come by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
Mr. President, I make a motion for reconsideration.
Second.
In hopes it does not prevail.
Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Those appointments have been made. All in favor? And we appreciate you wanting to serve and wanting to work for the city of Brockton and for the school department, and I know you're doing outstanding jobs, so best, best of luck to all of you. Thank you, appreciate it very much. Uh, before we go on to the next item, I just want to make a mention, um, that I should have mentioned at the beginning. I do want to, um, introduce to us, to you, our new ward four city council, Susan De Castro, and our new city council at large, Jean Darrencourt, because this is the first time that they've had a chance to actually sit here and do the work as a council. They've been doing the work as, as councils, believe me, they've been doing work, but I want to, I want to say that this is their first opportunity of really sitting behind their desk, so, welcome.
Yay!
I'm filling in for the city council president who is, who was away. I was council president last year. I do not have the opportunity to be at this particular stand for the year, but that's okay, I've been here before, and, and I accept that. But I do want to indicate that, uh, Council Rodriguez will be back, uh, in town later, uh, later this week. And Council Morningan did contact me, and he is not feeling well, that's why he's not here. Council Cruz?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we take items two through 12 collectively.
Second.
And under suspension of the rules and act on them this evening.
Second.
Been made and seconded to take items two through 12 collectively and suspend the rules and act on them also this evening, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Appointment of Carlos Stapina to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Wesley R. Dwyer to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Alexander J. Fontes to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Miles Chatier to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of McGregor June to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Brian T. Gray to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Ryan P. Gagny to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Arthur J. Ford to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Matthew W. Maloney to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Daniel E. Lang to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. And the appointment of William F. McNamara to the rank of fighter, firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department.
And before I take the vote, I do want to have, uh, the lieutenant come up, Lieutenant Solomon, if you could come up. Chief Williams had a previous engagement, so he couldn't be here this evening, so the lieutenant stepped in for him. He just wants to make a quick comment in regards to these, uh, fine, uh, fine gentlemen that are coming on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, it's a good night, a happy night for the fire department when our family gets bigger, and, um, these 11 candidates, they've earned the top scores on the firefighter entry level civil service exam this year, or last year. Um, I'm happy to say the seven veterans, four civilians, um, they've gone through an extensive background check, PAT test, interview process, they're all Brockton residents. Um, look forward to working with them, I wish them the best of luck. Um, they're filling spots that were created due to retirements, they're not new spots, but we are putting a dent in that, so I'm just happy to be here and representing Chief Williams, and I want to thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant. It's time the questions on an appointment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
And the appointments are confirmed.
Make a motion for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed of reconciliation, uh, reconsideration? Reconsideration fails.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll do a fine, fine job. We welcome you here to the city of Brockton. I'm sure you'll make us very proud in the academy, and I know you'll make us proud as you come back out and serve the, the city of Brockton and to keep us safe, and I know you'll be a, a part of us for a good, good many years. I may not be here when you grow to be my age, but, uh, God bless all of yous and, and keep up the good work and you do a good job, so congratulations to all of you and also to our five special police officers, uh, on the school police, uh, department as well. This time, we're just gonna take a five-minute recess, so then that way you can talk and you can, uh, depart at that time. Call the meeting of the city council back into order.
Mr. President?
Counselor Cruz?
Just a brief moment of personal privilege, I just want to let the people at home know that that was Deputy Chief Solomon representing the, the chief, not, uh, Lieutenant Solomon, so...
I'm sorry.
Oh, Deputy Chief, okay.
Just, and he was at one point a lieutenant, so that's okay, but he is deputy chief now, I just wanted the people at, at home to know that, that he didn't get demoted, so, thank you.
He, he did give me his card, but it's in my overcoat and the...
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, next item will be reports. Yep.
Report of the audit committee for its meeting of March 14th, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the finance committee for its meeting of March 8th, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the director of information technology requesting an appropriation of $20,000 from information technology full-time to information technology overtime. This transfer is necessary to cover unexpected overtime costs due to a staff member being called for active duty.
Oh, wow.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication for the director of the council on aging requesting the acceptance of a total grant, any amount of $174,189.43, from the executive office of elder affairs, fiscal 19 formula grant, to city of Brockton council on aging fiscal 19 formula grant fund. The funds will be dispersed in the following manner: salaries including overtime, energy, department equipment, repairs, printing, office supplies, registration, memberships, and subscriptions.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass General laws recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the district treasurer of the southeastern regional school district in accordance with the provisions of chapter 489, Acts of 1963 as amended, and section 16B, chapter 71 of the general laws as amended, January 2nd, 1982, and in consideration of the vote and action of the southeastern regional school district committee as of March 12th, 2019, whereby the budget for fiscal year 2020 was approved, certifying that the amount to be apportioned to the city of Brockton for share of capital and operating costs of the southeastern regional school district for the fiscal year period beginning July 1, 2019, is $4,51342. The assessment is to be paid in four equal quarterly installments, due September 1st, 2019, December 1st, 2019, March 1st, 2020, and June 1st, 2020.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an ordinance, chapter 14, offenses miscellaneous, section 14-49, panhandling, in council March 11th, 2019, passed to a third reading as amended by a hand vote, in city council July 23rd, 2018, ready and referred to standing committee on ordinance, that report was favorable as amended, in council March 11th, 2019, the amendment passed by a hand vote, passed to a third reading as amended by a hand vote.
Questions on ordination as amended by a roll call vote, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained.
An ordinance amending chapter two of the revised ordinances be adhered by audit that an ordinance amending chapter two of the revised ordinances dated February 12th, 2018, be amended by inserting G at the beginning of the text whereby the entirety of said an ordinance amending chapter two of the revised ordinances shall be a continuation of article 13, section 11-211, shall be inserted into section 11-211 as subsection G to continue after subsection F relative to article 13, motor vehicle repair, in city council March 11th, 2019, passed to a third reading by hand vote, in council November 13th, 2018, ready and referred to standing committee on ordinances, that report was favorable, in city council March 11th, 2019, passed to a third reading by hand vote.
Excuse me, questions on ordination by a roll call vote, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
No.
Uh, Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
No.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative, three in the negative.
The, uh, ordinance is ordained.
An ordinance amending chapter two of the revised ordinances dated February 12th, 2018, to revise second in title amendment to delete the reference in the first line to section 11-211, and insert in its place section 11-214, in city council March 11th, 2019, passed to a third reading by hand vote, in council November 13th, 2018, ready and referred to standing committee on ordinance, that report was favorable, in city council March 11th, 2019, passed to a third reading by a hand vote.
President?
Council Solomon?
As chairman of the ordinance committee, I just feel like me can't remember what this was, which, what this is about, um, if legislative council could just give us a quick summary.
The, it's a scripener's error.
Okay.
One of the ones that was submitted references the wrong section.
That's right.
You just switch it from section, um, 211 to 4.
That's right, a scripener's error, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Questions on ordination by a roll call vote, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
No.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative, one in the negative.
The ordinance is ordained.
Mr. President?
Counselor Farwell?
With respect to 23 and 24, I move reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail, items 23 and 24, all in favor? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
We have the petition of L&amp;L Auto Repair, Armando Mendez of 17 Middle Avenue, Braintree, for a motor vehicle repair body license located at 12 Riverside Avenue, Brockton, in council March 11th, 2019, postponed to the next city council meeting, in city council December 27th, 2018, postponed to January 14th, 2019, meeting by hand vote, in council January 14th, 2019, hearing held, referred to public safety by hand vote, in city council February 25th, 2019, postponed to the next meeting by hand vote, in city council March 11th, 2019, postponed to the next meeting by hand vote.
Counselor De Castro, any...
Um, I, thank you, and Mr. Mendez is here this evening, and he and I have, have agreed to some conditions, I can give them to you?
Okay.
Okay. You want me to read them?
Yeah, just read them, yep.
All right. These are conditions to the motor vehicle repair license at 12 Riverside Avenue. The business hours of operation, 8 o'clock AM to 6 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday, 8 o'clock AM to 1 o'clock PM Saturday, closed Sundays and all legal holidays. Number two, the business hours of operation will be posted on the building exterior using a minimum of two-inch-high letters. Number three, all outside storage of auto parts and/or debris is prohibited. Number four, all outside storage of vehicles is prohibited after the hours of operation listed above. Number five, all vehicles associated with this business must be parked off-street. Number six, all vehicle repair work must be undertaken inside the garage. Seven, parking spaces shown on parking plans submitted with application must be on a paved surface sized nine foot by 20 foot and properly striped with four-inch-wide stripes, including crosshashed sections. Number eight, four of the parking spaces shown on the plan must be marked as dedicated solely for use by occupants of the two apartment dwellings on the property. Nine, no bonding or painting of vehicles will be performed on-site. Ten, no wrecked, damaged, or dismantled motor vehicles or parts thereof will be placed or stored outside at any time. Eleven, any outside dumpster will be properly fenced per the ordinance and/or state law. Twelve, vending machines will not be placed outside the building. Thirteen, the property owner must obtain and maintain a garage license, and the applicant and property owner must provide a copy of the current lease of the garage and outside parking area of the property. In the event that the lease is not provided, or it lapses, or is not extended for any reason, this license will forthwith become null and void. Fourteen, subject to the provisions of revised ordinances of the city of Brockton, including without limitation, Article 8 thereof. That's it.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so now, now the question is going to be on granting with the stipulations by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? It has been granted in, with the stipulations, and you know what they are, okay? Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
We have the appointment of Daniel L. Branch of 32 Dupont Circle, Brockton, to the Brockton community access board of directors for a term of three years, in council March 11th, 2019, ready and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable.
The question's on confirmation by a roll call vote, will the clerk please call the roll?
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the appointment is confirmed.
An appropriation in the amount of $400,000 from full-time salaries to police overtime, favorable as amended, in council March 11th, 2019, ready and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable as amended. The amendment was from appropriation to transfer due to a scripener's error.
By hand vote, the question's on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed? The amendment is accepted, the question is now adopt, the question is on adoption as amended by a roll call, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
And the order is adopted.
Order that the Brockton city council, acting on behalf of the city of Brockton, for consideration of $1, does hereby grant an easement to the Mass Electric Company, a Massachusetts corporation having its principal office at 40 South Van Road, Waltair, Mass, for purposes unrestricted, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year-round ingress and egress by persons, equipment, or vehicles of various loads from the public way to access grantees' electric facilities, whether now existing or hereafter installed, located on certain real property abutting the grantor's land, which abutting real property is known as Zero West Elm Street, Brockton, Massachusetts, and identified as Brockton Assessor's parcel ID 091-004, to provide electric service to set abutty real property and others, and further that the city council authorizes the mayor to execute the grant of easement and to make other actions necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of the same, in council March 11th, 2019, ready and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President, move for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration, does not, hopes it does not prevail, all in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Resolved to invite Captain John Halcy, the chair of the tractor commission, to discuss with the city council the situation with illegally parked cars on residential streets, and as to why during the late, latest storm that enough was not done to address this issue, and why when contacting the police a non-emergency number, residents were told that at times supervisors were not available, in council March 11th, 2019, ready and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Resolved to invite Matthew Dyer, representative of urban and community forestry, again, to inform the public about the Free Trees program that will begin in the, uh, in the spring, in council March 11th, 2019, ready and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote, madam clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Alexandra's Way, extending from West Chestlet Street, subtly a distance of 765.71 feet, more or less, and for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Excuse me.
Oh, you're done, okay. Okay, referred to finance and planning.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Rachel's Way, extending from Alexandra's Way, southwesterly and southeasterly, a distance of 647.28 feet, more or less, to Alexandra's and southeasterly, a distance of 647.28 feet, more or less, to Alexandra's Way, and for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton.
Refer to, of the Committee on Finance and Planning.
We have a total appropriation of $20,000 from information technology full-time to information technology overtime.
Refer to finance.
We have a total grant award in the amount of $174,189.43 from Executive Office of Elder Affairs Fiscal 19 Formula Grant, to City of Brockton Council on Aging Fiscal 19 Formula Grant Fund.
Refer to finance. Counselor Beauregard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three late files.